Our meeting is open and we are being recorded a couple times. Alright, um, first thing, we don't have any meeting minutes. I like that. Uh, any audience participation? What comment? Okay, uh, Highway, Ray, what do you have for us?
Where are you sitting?
Hey, Rainy. It's rainy this time, huh?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
So we got a lot accomplished this week with the help of Rainy, honestly. I ended up also, and Vic Gates ended up helping out too, for communication on Huntington Road. I ended up getting ahold of Colin Meddy, the State Forester Director, and talking with him. And he hooked me up with John Ryan. He's been doing the timber work. He's like the head of the timber work, as my understanding, out on the end of Huntington Road. So he oversees everything. And there was a miscommunication between the two. There was John Ryan and Tom Jenkins. There was miscommunication of no one coming to the highway garage to actually notify us or even say, hey, we're gonna be out there. So I opened up that line with him. I gave him my number. I said, look, even the email, whenever you guys step foot back in the woods again, even though you're saying you're done two weeks ago, well, two weeks ago, we had damage on that road we had to repair. And we got it done quick. But there has to be an open line of communication. So at least stop at the shop. I said, did you end up speaking with someone prior that was in my seat before? And he said, no, we never even came to the garage. So we got that squared away. So if there's any issues-
So they're done out there?
Yeah, they're done out there. And I guess when they rolled out, that was it. So we don't have to worry about that at least. So that was good to at least touch base with them. Uh, what else we have? Lot of debris down this morning. The guys went, the guys were busy all day. And they went out, they checked the steam pipe on Gibbs. That's starting to fill up, the Culver pipe that's right by Zane's house, or not Zane, John, uh, what's his name?
John Inalane. Yeah, I know where you mean.
Johnny Ben.
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
That, his old house, the big steam pipe there. Well, we got about a foot before it's gonna be plugged completely and it'll be coming over the road. So tomorrow, we're gonna end up, once they finish up everything that they need to end up doing, we gotta sand her to get out of a truck. We'll go check it out, see how bad it is. If it's something that can wait for like Wednesday, we'll end up taking care of that Wednesday. We'll send the cable and the claw through it with the excavator and pull the debris out of the pipe. Cause we have about a two-foot difference. So the head pressure is good. We want that so that it'll end up cleaning the pipe out when it actually does let go. So that'll be good to end up having done for the midweek so we don't have a issue around that pipe. We did end up last week fixing a washout that was right outside of the residence house right before that steam pipe. We had like a two-foot ditch that ended up going right to the Culver pipe. So that got taken care of. I think, what else? Pretty much just getting paperwork all in order in the job, going through all the files.
Culver on Maple Lane. I see there's some cones there. What's going on with that? Is that our culver or is that their culver?
So the culver that is, our culver is there. I wanna find out who owns that culver, first off. Do we own it? Does the road own it? You know, Maple Lane?
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
I know we had someone doing work in there. I'd like to find out what he ended up doing or she ended up doing. Uh, we do have a few pipes sticking up out of the ground where I'm wondering where they're going, but we're having some washing going around the actual existing driveway culver. So we ended up digging around it. I'm getting murky, uh, water coming out the bottom around the pipe and not coming out the center of the pipe. So where the tree line was along that house, that's, there's a pipes sticking up out of the ground, kinda like a midship. I don't know, catch basin they're trying to make to catch the material. It's really not the best, but I'd like to figure out why not just shoot it right to the inlet, not even four feet ahead. And then the water would've flowed right in the same pipe that was there.
You might, that's private there.
He's trying to talk to everything.
Is that, that's who did it?
Yeah.
So do we have planes?
Edna Willander. He was hired by Edna Willander, Willander to fix that part of the road.
Okay.
And so you might talk to him, he might've figured out where it all comes down.
See what he's doing. Okay. Uh, this week, I'll, I'll send him a call and I'll leave a message with him.
No.
And I'll see if I can get ahold of him. The only thing, I don't have any contact information for him other than just-
Do you have contact numbers?
Yeah.
If you do, if I can get that for you. Alright. Now at least I can just have a chat with him.
Is that a metal culver or?
That is a metal culver, the original one. Like the actual road one. Yeah. But there's a lot of plastic that's around there. So it's just, you have another plastic pipe that crosses over right by the telephone pole. Made sure that was cleaned out. The metal one's completely collapsed and covered right now. And then I brought it up with Gordon, tell him, look, you gotta figure out what's gonna happen with this entrance of the, the road. Because it'd be nice to actually have it paved and do a new shut-off stack coming out of the ground.
For the water department.
Yeah, and then have it sealed.
I don't, I don't know how wide the road is there, Ray. You know, for the center line, where the, would be. Cause that'll tell you if you look at where you're gonna be. It might be all Maple Lane. I don't know. And we can't do any work on that private road, so.
No, and that's why I haven't done, only thing I did was I looked at it. I did some samples, you know? I ended up making a pool, checking out, making sure we didn't have a water break, contacted Gordon, making him informed on it. He, his shut-off is washed right out, like the actual cap and the pipe is visible from the washout. So that's why I was a little concerned about that. I know. So if, if we can end up figuring out resolution to it and doing some asphalt, even if they end up paying for it, do an apron going in at least, you know, six feet, they'll hold that all together. But before we ever put any asphalt on the ground, I'd make sure that all those pipes are right where you want them to be for the next 20 years.
Yeah.
Honestly, so we're not going back five steps.
You're a hundred percent right. I agree with you.
Um, my neighborhood asked, and I keep forgetting to bring it up, um, on Chester Road, Rayner's before me, there's a culver that runs under the ground and it floods the front of their yard every year during what season? Just if you don't mind just keeping an eye out if you notice it.
Is it on your side of the road?
It's on my side of the road. It's in his front yard.
Is that the house that burned down?
No, next, past that.
Past your house, right?
It's right next to that driveway though. Just past that driveway.
There used to be a trench that ran down going toward the turnpike there and it's all overgrown and everything.
Yeah, so it's just, um, it just floods and it ends up with like a little flood.
Okay.
So just keep an eye on it if you notice it flooding and then just what your thoughts are in terms of like, if we need to do anything with it.
They had something?
You're saying?
Yeah, I don't know. I think it, there was something, like you said there before, and I think it's just kinda-
It was a soil that went down to here.
But that's on residence land though, am I correct?
It's on the property line.
On the property?
Between the two properties.
Okay, so it's not town property, anything?
Oh, it's not. Rainy, did you have?
I think he's got-
That, that one spot there, um, I'm not sure, but is it really on Chester Road or is it on North Street?
It's Chester.
North Street Estate?
Yes, Chester Road. It's past the, the dump.
Past the dump road.
Okay. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to remind Ray was the signage. You were talking about the loggers?
Yeah, that's the next thing I'm getting to.
Okay.
Today.
Oh, good, okay.
I was gonna let them know about that.
Okay. Alright.
So we did end up getting signs, uh, like Rainy mentioned. So we ended up ordering, um, ordering enough signs for the dirt roads to make sure that we can actually visibly post to the public, road closed, mud season, and then it has the Blanford Highway and then our contact number for commercial vehicles. So I don't want residents saying, oh, I couldn't get a gas delivery. I couldn't get my mail. My kids didn't come down. No, it clearly states, "Commercial Vehicles." So we ended up getting nice red outline with a white background. So it really stands out. Nice reflective, and they're not small signs either. We ended up doing, it's, I think, eight by sixteen. So, and they'll go right underneath the street signs. I ordered up Sanderson Brook's sign because we had an accident there, I guess, a long time ago and the sign never got replaced. So that's one that I noticed we got ordered and that's gonna be going back up very shortly, as soon as I get that.
Good.
Gueland Road, do you have any, uh, have you reached out to the loggers that are doing the work down in, uh?
In the forest area?
Forest there.
So I don't have Chris's contact information, but what I can do tomorrow is I can do some research and see if I can get ahold of him.
Cause they're, they're not doing a sunny favors with that road either.
On Gueland itself?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, see what they have going on and what's their game plan. Because if they're gonna be moving for the next couple of weeks, that road is gonna just get worse and worse, especially right now. Everything's turning into a swamp.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to address that. That road has to come up a little bit.
Yeah, most definitely. I agree with you a hundred percent.
We were, do you want us to make the motion? Um, we're going into executive session at 6:30. I just, I wanna-
No, later than 6:30. We'll call vote to do that.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we, we have to, we are to get through this in the next 20 minutes, just by- Okay?
If anybody else has any other questions, I would say that's it. Just getting stuff done up there, making sure we're getting progress.
Okay, good. Thank you, Ray.
Welcome.
Alright, Christina, what do you have for us?
Uh, the town received an anonymous and generous donation of service member flags to be flown at the Veterans Memorial. Uh, the donor wishes to remain anonymous.
Okay.
But I did want to take a moment to publicly appreciate them. Um, they're very, very nice and we will definitely be using them. And then once we get them up, if we could have a picture, Mary, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I met with the new town accountant, Kelly. Uh, things are going really well. She met TJ. Um, she met a couple of other members. She met Mary. She was sworn in.
Okay.
And, uh, things are going well there. Um, I did reach out to legal regarding the potential climate change leader status. I don't know if you guys saw the-
Yeah, I did. There's a lot there.
There's a lot there. Um, so I think that's something that you guys are gonna have to discuss. Mark did write up an agenda item if you guys want to vote on whether to go board or what you're doing with that.
I think, yeah, we need to talk about it.
Uh, I haven't gotten any official word, um, from Kristen Smithy, but I did see that the school assessment uh, for Blanford this year is at 1.63 million, an increase of $59,010 over fiscal year '24.
Okay.
Uh, they also discussed the 35 eighth graders who have expressed an interest in attending vocational schools, although applications aren't-
Yeah, you could do that.
Thirty-five.
I thought you said eighty-five.
No, have expressed an interest, but applications aren't due until April 1st, so we won't, we won't know. Those numbers could fluctuate. The total number of Gateway students currently enrolled in Westfield Tech and Smith Vocational is 92.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you say we, you have 35 potential new students at either's both?
Either vocational, yes. Thirty-five eighth graders have expressed interest.
Um, so we do have the, I don't know, I guess, finance can talk about it. I'm not sure what's in our stabilization for education, but I think we've been eating away at it, so.
Okay. Um, the bid solicitation for the library has been submitted on combis and will be posted on March 19th in accordance with the posting on the central register and the newspaper publication. So that is good to go. Um, there is some, well, I'll let Mr. Gates address the possible conservation agent that we had talked about. If you wanna talk about that with your other stuff too. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, there also were issues with the post-community agree, agreement for Belle Fleur. So I had, they contacted me on Friday and asked me to get it done by Saturday. And it's, it's not that simple. The legal has to look into it. Legal is looking into it. They have come back and said that there's different designations, whether they are, uh, an 11 or a 3 and some outdoor thing. There's a lot going on, but legal is working on it.
Okay.
Uh, I completed the amendment for the Mass Works Grant for Beach Hill. Municipality is now authorized to receive its final reimbursement. And Mr. Rivaldi will process the town's final reimbursement either today or tomorrow and send it to the E O E D's Chief Financial Officer. And hopefully Blanford will receive the remaining $19,604 within the next three to five business days. I did send that information to both Sarah and Kelly.
Okay, good.
Um, a representative from the Hampton County Sheriff's Office reached out to me just today. Uh, apparently they have a program. Um, he works with Nick Cochi. And they would like to schedule a community service day. And they're reaching out to see if we have any projects around town that we would like for them to help with.
He said no, right?
Well, I did say, I know that there are a few town-owned green spaces that are in need of some TLC.
Okay.
Uh, he said that, and then I asked a, in a town employee would need to be present or overseeing it. And he said, no, we would not need somebody present or supervising, but they would like appoint person at the appropriate department with whom he could coordinate details, equipment, protocols, leaving bags of trash or brush that they cut. That would be perfect. They spoke with, uh, Don Humison in Chester and they're planning on providing basically the same thing, TLC for their green spaces. So that would work out.
Great, yeah.
Yeah, they used to do that before. Uh, we haven't do work on like Blair Road and some of the sidewalks.
So I can tell you then, we're-
Yeah, okay, absolutely. Thank you. I will move forward with that. Uh, we are still, I am still waiting for the, um, contract renewal for the police department from, um, Don Humison. So I will check in again with him on that for the Chester, Blanford, and at least shared services. And, uh, Chief Dubio let me know that they, that she sent a letter to inform, uh, a resident of several complaints regarding a cow and a sheep that just keep getting out and getting onto somebody else's property. So I have a copy of that letter here.
Okay.
And why is the chief doing that? Why isn't that dog?
I do not know.
Her parenting, she has nothing to do with the animals.
Well, sheep and animals.
And dogs.
Oh.
Yeah, Jennifer, what if Jessica Karen, that's supposed to be taken through or things like-
Yeah, that says in regards to a loose cow and a loose sheep, so. Uh, but I just wanna let everybody know.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Jennifer, calm down.
So I really just have that. Did you guys get the chance to see the?
Looks awesome, yeah.
So it's about 90% finished and it'll probably be ready by the end of April, the latest. So we have some signage and some, the rules and regulations.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Okay, get that out and we'll do that through the paper and-
Great.
And then we'll be ready.
Love it.
That's it.
Thank you. Excellent work. Alright, conservation.
So as far as the agent goes, um, I had a discussion with Dave Johnson, who's the Chair of the Beckett Conservation Commission.
George.
Thank you. Their, their agent, they also had Nick, veterinarian, right?
Okay.
And, but when he left, they brought in another woman who was their previous agent. She's not leaving. Um, so, but they've identified a person who they believe would be interested in doing Beckett in Blanford.
Okay.
And maybe another town or two. She's looking to get like full-time work. And they were supposed to interview her last Friday. I traded calls with Dave today, but I didn't connect with him, so I don't know how that went. But I'm gonna pursue that with him.
That would be great.
To see if that works out. Uh, I asked him to send me her qualifications and so forth, but I haven't got that yet. But, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pursue that at least to see if I can make that work, cause that would be a greater-
I wonder, do you know if, um, the Hilton, any of the Hiltons have a conservation agent? Any besides us or?
Oh, many of them. Most, most do. Yeah.
I'm wondering if anyone else is in need of someone.
Um, well, I, I, I think she's looking at places over in the Berkshires to fill out, but-
They probably pay better.
But, but anyway, uh, that, that was a new development that I was promising, so I'll, I'll keep following that.
Good, great. Thank you.
So the other thing I wanted to talk to you about tonight, I think, is in the good news column compared to what we-
Better than the, yeah, last, last week was like end of world.
So I was contacted by the Department of Conservation and Recreation last week by email, sort of out of the blue. Um, but it, it involves a project, um, out, way out on Chester Road, your Jolance property, actually. Where, uh, the Terry property, which is the Christmas tree farm.
Mm-hmm.
They own property on both sides of the road there. Five hundred and seventy-seven acres. That, um, the, the plan is, as I understand it, that the nature conservancy-
Oh.
Is gonna buy-
Oh, that would be-
The property. But at the end of the day, it's gonna end up split between DCR on one side and Mass Wildlife on the other side. So the side that the Christmas trees are on, that would connect to the Chester, Blanford State Forest.
Oh, great.
And they're looking to build, or e- either use the existing entrances there to make a new access point into the state forest from that side of the road. And the other piece of it, which is really interesting, is they're looking to create a wildlife passage under the turnpike.
Oh, wow.
Like a tunnel.
Yeah.
Under the turnpike.
That's so cool.
For wildlife. I can't imagine what the engineering is for something-
I think they had just completed something like that and I'd heard something in the news of maybe it was New York or Vermont where they had done one. What's it was like?
Florida.
Yeah.
Florida.
Usually they go over, not on.
Yeah, that's so cool.
I hope it's not like the Big Dig down there.
No, no. I used to hunt down in there and that's quite a distance, uh, you know, from Chester Road going in through, uh, who's the best? So it's the two parcels outlined at both sides of Chester Road.
Okay. None here, none there.
No.
That's great.
So what you're looking for from us is a letter of support.
Yeah.
Which, which I, I, other members of the Conservation Commissioner in full support.
Mm-hmm.
I think this is an awesome project.
Yeah.
For the town, if this, this comes to pass, which it sounds like it will. So they sent a, a draft, um, or a template of a, of a letter.
Okay.
Which I tweaked a little bit, but I've got it all ready to sign.
Perfect, okay.
So I, I thought I'd just bring you folks into the loop before we just shot this letter off, but it seems like-
They also just, they would like the 120-day waiver. Did he talk to you about that?
No.
Uh, should DCR decide to pursue this acquisition, it may be necessary to complete the transaction in less than the 120-day notice period otherwise required. But then he called me again and I believe he said that they don't need the waiver. That's why I wanted to touch base with you, um, to see if he had mentioned anything about the waiver. I will check with him again.
Okay.
But.
So Christina, the, the waiver regarding?
It says, uh, if we were to give it to him and say pursuant to 301 CMR 51.08, so-and-so, whoever, Kara, on behalf of the select board hereby agree to waive the 120-day notice period as required by said section as to a parcel of land of approximately 218 acres in the town of Blanford, shown on Exhibit A attached here to, in which the Department of Conservation and Recreation is considering acquiring an interest. Um, okay. We may not need the waiver request anymore, given the delay in the project. However, we do eventually need a certificate of announcement as shown below stating that the select board announced the project in a public meeting. And they were hoping to close by the end of June, but the project has since been delayed. Returning the certification by email is fine. He gave us the letter of support template.
Hmm. So do we need to make a public announcement? Do we wait until?
Public meeting, so.
Town meeting.
Um, I think just a select board meeting, probably.
Well, it does say public meeting, so I think it would have to be something that's, um, published.
Okay, so.
So I have something else that I have to publish coming up too, so we can do it then.
George, question?
I think it's a great project. My only concern about it is, is the effect it might have on the tax base of the town, how much Boston taxes. Only because the town has suffered tremendously from the Springfield watershed property and to lose this much acreage impossible to all that, uh, that acreage for commercial use or home use. Um, I asked to raise some questions about what it's gonna do to the taxes to the town.
Fine.
Do we know what we're getting in taxes now and what we'll get in taxes after this project goes through?
Um, okay. Thank you.
It's probably chapter.
It is chapter. It's chapter 61, so.
But what, does anybody have any figures on?
Not, George, of course I don't have any figures.
Not yet.
He just brought it up.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, they put this as part of their proposal.
I'd much rather we lose the taxes than solar farms and, uh, storage banks move in, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the other big picture with this, i- is that it connects a lot of protected property on both sides. All the way from Florida and Chester to the other side of the turnpike. It's a, it's a, that's a huge thing that it connects all.
Yeah, I think that's awesome. Thank you for coming with-
So I go to sign, I'll sign this. It's rented.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I will put, um, for their, cause they need this public certificate of announcement. And I have to do something else for EverSource, so I will publish all of that, do a public meeting for that. We'll get them the certificate of announcement as well.
Okay, great.
If you, if you ever get the chance before they make it off limits or anything, if you follow, uh, the road for, uh, what was his name, uh? Anyways, where McKenna used to live.
Heavy, that's.
Uh, Upton's place. You follow that road down and you come to a pretty good-sized hill. When you go up over that hill and come down the other side, it's like no one's ever been there. And what was beautiful about it, back like at the turn of the century, I was down there in my voice, there's a sawmill down there. And then when we went down there, it looked like they just walked away. The truck was there, the piles, the lumber were there, the sawmill was still standing. Everything was there. It was just like they didn't go to work the next day.
What happened?
Alright, thank you, Dick. Motion to approve, warrant 19, payroll. I didn't see the accounts one. I just saw the-
No, she didn't get that to me. See, do you have any idea about that? She didn't, she was the last week.
This is a vehicle warrant?
Yeah, I don't have the AP warrant from, from Kelly. I don't have one.
So, um, just the, um, payroll warrant, number 19. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Alright.
Alright, um, do you need me to approve it pending? Do you need a motion to approve it? So that we can release checks and then we can just?
How can we do that though?
Um, we can have-
Is that legal to do?
They could.
It, well, they could stop and sign. TJ and Jeff? Yeah, I'll, I'll just ask TJ or Jeff to come and sign it before, before Thursday. Um.
Alright, so you guys just flag it and just look at water.
Okay, can you approve it pending?
No.
How do we do this pending receipt?
Contingent upon, um-
I knew it wasn't there and then I forgot to go back. I checked at 3 o'clock and it still wasn't there. And I didn't, didn't think to go-
Motion to approve warrant 19, accounts payable, um, contingent upon no, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Uh, when we pull it? No conflict, no, not that. No concerns?
No issues?
No issues, something like that. Is there a second? Any discussion? On favor?
Alright.
Okay, um, so we've got the amended contract between Mass Munson and Town Blanford for treasure collector, which we already talked about and agreed upon. Um, so motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Alright.
Time. Um, we, motion to approve the special warrant for council and aging vehicle. Let me just, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Alright, alright.
Um, and then we've got the final quarterly report from the Mass Community Block Grant.
Um, I don't need a motion, just a signature.
Just a signature, okay. Alright, that's all set, signed. Alright. Um, and then we have the expenditure report. Um, let me just look at it real quick. Did you guys see anything on it? Or was it concerned, or was my cheat sheet? It's marked, it's almost April, so like 70%. Alright, so we would do, um, a motion and a roll call vote to go into executive session. Hold on. Uh, for two reasons. GLC 30A, Section 21. Oh, same reason, two different, uh, one to approve the draft highway superintendent contract and the other, uh- Oh, same reason, two different, uh, one to approve the draft highway superintendent contract and the other high, uh, highway superintendent contract with Ray. Um, roll call, roll care says yes. Not to reconvene, did I say that? Um, uh, discussion, all favor?
Oh, it's sideways, this is fun.